Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm glad that everyone is safe and here. The first item on our agenda is announcements, and then we have some awards to be given. And our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, June 18th, and Tuesday, July 2nd is canceled because of the holiday. And we have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, July 11th at 5:30. All meetings are held here in the council chambers. Now, I'm going to go to that end to make the awards for I Love Burnsville Week essays. Mr. Ryan, is... Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Kelly does not need to be on the phone.
Did you give him a call? Because maybe we can proceed with some things and wait. Is it okay with the parents and the students? We need the money. And he's the one with the money. Okay, so I think we will wait, if that's all right with all of you. Yeah, okay. Thank you so much for being flexible and nimble during this time. And Mr. Ryan will call and see if Mr. Kelly's on his way. So, everyone, and this is I Love Burnsville Week. And it's a time in our community where, for the last 12 years, we have been very intentional about really reaching out, being inclusive, being caring and compassionate, and through our acts, be kind to one another. And so, I Love Burnsville is that time of the year where we just make ourselves aware that this is something we need to do. Now, it's only a week, but we want it to be a time that you think of doing it throughout the whole year. So, and it's also the time where, this time, just this year, the city is working, along with our partners, at AE2S Communications to launch a community survey to determine what makes Burnsville unique, what gives Burnsville its personality, and why people choose to live, work, and visit here. So, we're kicking off the I Love Burnsville Week by, and we ask all of you to visit www.burnsvillemn.gov/whyburnsville. And please take the survey. It's a very quick, two-minute survey. The survey is part of the large initiative to help promote all of the great things about Burnsville to the community and potential residents and businesses beyond our borders. So, that's also happening this weekend. We ask all of you to please go take this very short survey. And then we'll move on to citizens' comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda and not on application form that's coming before us at a future date? Seeing no one, we will now proceed with the I Love Burnsville contest, essay contest, because Mr. Kelly is here. And, yes, and, welcome.
Thank you, our apologies. We were in a stairwell at the credit union waiting for 20 of your fans.
Well, please come up, because this is a partnership. So, thank you, and Mr. Kelly, I think you should do the honors of introducing the new CEO at the credit union.
I would be my honor, yes.
Yes, please, and then we'll talk about, see, because he and I have been doing this. But welcome. So, you do the introduction, so everybody knows.
Thank you very much. For many years, for 10 years, how's it been?
12.
12 years, oh my goodness. Time flies when we don't have any point, doesn't it?
Remember, you're such an old graduate.
That's right. We measure this by the age of one of my children. We have Bill Rager, former CEO of Firefly Credit Union, has been a part of this ceremony, and now we get to turn over the reins to our new CEO, Dale Turner, who has joined us. You are six months on the job.
Six months in.
Fantastic. And this is his first official of many I Love Burnsville essays, and we are just thrilled and pleased to be a part of this program and hope to be a big part of it for many years to come. When you think about it, the third graders that we awarded in year one are in college right now, aren't they?
I know, can you imagine?
That's something else. Fantastic, fantastic.
And Mr. Turner, I am so happy that you're a part of this and that you came this evening, even with the storm and everything.
Absolutely. We stayed on the first floor of the stairwell to make sure we could sprint out as quick as we can.
That's right.
So, we apologize for the delay.
No problems. So, and for everybody, Mr. Kelly and I are the ones who work with Mr. Ryan to read all of the submittals to the essay contest. So, I'm going to have you stand here, and I'll read the names, and then you have the honor of giving them...
I am going to let...
Mr. Turner do the honors.
I will let Dale, and I would like to get a photograph.
Oh, well, we'll do the...
You'll do that?
No, no.
Oh, we've got a professional here. Even better. I'll just get in the way then.
We shake all the hands.
That's good.
And then we'll also take a whole big picture with everybody, and with the teachers and the principals and the administrators from the school, like we usually do. So, I really want to, on behalf of the city council and our staff and the community of Burnsville, thank Mr. Kelly and Firefly and Mr. Turner for their generosity and value for our students and the work that they do in understanding how to write an essay and to really communicate what they feel about Burnsville. So, we got to the point that Mr. Kelly and I, I think, when did we make the decisions? We're not going to have first, second, and third place. We decided these were going to be the winners, and these were going to be the honorable mentions, because we couldn't decide.
They made it too hard for us, didn't they?
Yes, because they were all so good. So, for this contest, students were asked to complete the sentence, "I love Burnsville because..." And with over 225 submissions in this year's contest, it was extremely difficult to select just three winners. So, with the support from Firefly Credit Union, we have four winners this year and three honorable mentions, because we get to the point where we're looking at each other and says, "So, they're all good. Who do you think we're supposed to sign?" And we both said, "Well..." And I always have to look to him, and I says, "Is it okay? Do we have money?"
Right, we find a little more money, yes.
So, but, so, we have four winners and three honorable mention recipients, and the four winners and their teachers will each receive $50, and the four honorable mention students will each receive $25 from the Firefly Credit Union. So, with all of that, I really want to thank Firefly for their contribution. So, when I call your name, would you come up, one at a time, so you can get your picture taken individually with Mr. Turner and Mr. Kelly? These are the honorable mentions. Charlotte Kiefer, and teacher Andrea Tredo, and Hannah Schulten from Gideon Pond. Please come up. So, Charlotte, where are you? Come on, come on, Charlotte. Yeah, and you too. So, Charlotte, this is your good case, yes. And Mr. Kelly?
Congratulations, Charlotte.
Yeah. Good work!
You want to hold this for us?
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
All right, everybody on three, smile. One, two, three, and let's do one more on three. One, two, three.
Nice job, Charlotte. The next honorable mention is Zach Eisenberger, teacher Sonia Baki from Sutrail.
Congrats, Zach. Very cool. Oh, yes, get in the front.
On three, smile. One, two, three, and let's do one more on three. One, two, three.
Okay. And our last honorable mention, Hamdi Mohammed, teacher Ashley Mickelson from Vista View. Not here?
No.
Okay. Then we will go to the winners of the essay. And we also want the students to come up, and also with the teachers. So, the four winners, in no specific order, Alan Engdahl, teacher Annie Engdahl from Neal Elementary.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah, so it is.
You go hold that proudly. All right, smile on three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
Okay. So, Mrs. Engdahl, is this your son?
Yes, I have the honor of teaching my son this year.
Very well done. Great. Next honorable mention, Jeffrey Noah, teacher Jessica Rao from Gideon Pond.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jeffrey. I love this suit, too. That's awesome.
Yeah, so wait a minute. Alan, you've got to come back up, because you have to read. You're the one of the winners, so don't leave yet. I messed up. So, Alan, you have to read your essay. So, it was given to you, yeah? Because you're a winner, and we've got a stool here for you. Okay. Nice loud voice.
I love Burnsville because of their many cool parks. My sister, my mom, and I play this game called Park Hunters, and we go around looking for new parks to play on for 10 minutes before we go to a new park. After three parks, we vote on which one we like the best and visit it again another day. I experienced my first time on roller skates at Skateville at a birthday party. It was the best thing I ever experienced. I could tell a lot of people like skating, because they look like they're having a lot of fun. I dance at Headline Dance Center in Burnsville, and I love it. My grandma loves taking me and my sister to Old Country Buffet on Thursdays, because kids eat free.
I want you to know that Mr. Kelly and Mr. Ryan and I think that that's a great game.
Park Hunters.
Park Hunters. That's really cool. Thank you, yes. And then Jeffrey Noah, and so, come up here with your teacher.
Want to do the picture or the...
Picture, and then you'll read, and then you'll read your...
Fantastic.
Yeah.
All right, smile on three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
Okay, now, it's your turn, Jeffrey, to read your... Yes.
I love Burnsville because it's amazing. The first reason why I love Burnsville is because I love seeing the diversity everywhere I go, people helping the diverse people in need. I love always seeing diverse people at my school. Second, I love the library. The first reason is a lot of books. The second reason, it's super quiet and lost for a library. If someone's reading a book you like, there's always more of that book. Last but not least, school. In school, everyone is amazing at different things. Everyone works at different speeds and friendly. Everyone's safe. There's nowhere better than Burnsville.
Thank you, Jeffrey. That was very well done. Okay, and the next winner is Gabrielle Frye, teacher Jennifer Hauptman from Vista View. You're going to get your prize for...
Congratulations.
Yeah, both your envelope and your teacher's are there. So, you're going to read your...
Well, let's look at the photo. Pull that, so we can see your name. There you go. Excellent.
All right, everybody smile on three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
You're going to get to read your essay.
I love Burnsville because it has so much fun stuff to do and learn. And did I tell you that it has a lot of love and support? For the people that like shopping, the Burnsville Mall is not far. There are some beaches, parks, and playgrounds. If you'd like to see dances and plays, the Ames Center is for you. The Fire Monster Carnival is really fun, because it has carnival games, rides, performances, and food. It happens every September, so don't miss it. It also has lakes and ponds to feed the ducks, and that's why I love Burnsville.
Thank you, very nice. And the next winner is Liam Sauer, teacher Andrea Tredo, and Hannah Schulten from Gideon Pond. Liam.
Congratulations.
Nice job, Andrea, Mrs. Tredo.
All right, on three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
Okay. Liam, you get to read your essay. Nice outside voice.
Yeah, nice and loud.
These are some reasons why I love Burnsville. One reason I love Burnsville is everybody is nice and friendly. Everybody says hi to you. Another reason is because people in my neighborhood are generous. I have also never met someone that has been mean to me since I moved here. Another reason I like Burnsville is because it is peaceful. One reason I think it is peaceful is there is a lot of animal life and plant life. Everyone is nice also. It is a quiet city. Another reason I like Burnsville is the layout of Burnsville is nice. Most of the stores are close to each other. Also, there is a place for everything. There is a lot of space, and still, there is a lot of stores and homes. This is why I like Burnsville.
Mr. Turner and Mr. Kelly, very nicely done. And so, we're going to go right over here and take a picture of everybody, and I saw Principal Belmont come in. So, all of the students and teachers, and you can come up also with the administrators and the principals. I know Mr. Belmont. Okay, we're going to be right here, so that the...
A group photo?
Yeah, a big group photo with council and our city manager.
So, if we could get adults behind kids in front? And then get everybody to step back there. And let's smile on three. One, two, three. Let's get a couple more here. One, two, three, and last one. One, two, three.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you to all the students and teachers. It's always such a blessing and a treasure to hear what our young people have to say about the city that they live in. So, thank you so much. And now, we'll move on to the third item on the agenda, and that's additions to the final agenda, and this is only for emergency items. Mrs. Mascoli?
No additions, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Nothing from the council? Okay, we are at the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on the consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on a consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Mrs. Mascoli?
No, Madam Mayor.
Members of the council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item 4K.
Okay, 4K. Anybody else? If not, I need a motion for the balance, please.
Will you approve?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And we are on to 4K. 4K is to approve plans and specifications and order the solicitation of quotes for the 2019 multimodal transportation improvement project at Lackavon on-street bike lane. Councilmember Workman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and councilmembers. I just wanted to bring some attention to the public comments that were included in our background. I am just looking to draw attention to the, what were there? Five comments about a desire for a crosswalk, and then there were four additional comments regarding the type of bike lane. Some spoke to separation of it rather than an on-street and dedicated bike lane. So, I guess with that, I would...
Are you asking for Mr. Peterson to...
I'm just looking to validate or discuss publicly the comments related to the desire for a crosswalk on Lackavon and Crystal Lake, like, Crystal Lake Road East. And my assumption is that it's at the intersection where the small parking lot is to enter Lackavon Park.
Mr. Peterson, so the question is that...
What, can you tell me about the history of anything we've done at that intersection, and if this is a area that we've received comment on before?
Councilmember Workman, members of the council. Basically, we have received concerns at this area before, kind of echoing here, that requesting a crosswalk, there's several things that go into that. We receive requests for crosswalks throughout the city all year, and that's why we do have a pedestrian policy that helps us describe when and where we should put in crosswalks, because they, if they're not put in the right spot, they can be more, do more damage than good, because we might be encouraging crossings where it's not a safe place to do so. So, some of the criteria in the policy is, you know, if someone's requesting it, do we think we could get up to 20 crossings an hour? Otherwise, it's deemed that it wouldn't be worth the effort to put it in and the cost. Another thing we have to worry about is, on your, on that, this particular location, it's going to be difficult to figure out where exactly the appropriate location is. It's, in some ways, it's too bad the beach wasn't right across the street from Lackavon. So, if we go put it more up by the beach, the request may be that it should go down by Lackavon Drive. We could try to put it in the middle, like, Crystal Lake Road. What I'm saying is, wherever we put this in, we may get a bunch of crossings, even occurring not at the crosswalk. So, it's, if we end up trying to put one in, it'll be difficult to figure out where to go. But essentially, I mean, I guess one more thing to point out, there's a lot of curves in that road, and so, we don't want to encourage people to cross where it isn't safe to do so. Those different factors have been reasons why in the past, when we've received requests there, we haven't moved forward, is it's, there's a lot of complications. It's not an obvious spot where one is needed and where we, you know, we see people crossing with, in great numbers. However, with the bike lanes, maybe that will be the impetus, where we are getting a lot more people on foot or bike who start to cross. You know, it's not illegal to cross the road without a crosswalk. It is a legal maneuver to do. It's just, you don't have the assistance of the striping or a signage type of thing to help you. you don't have the assistance of the striping or a signage type of thing to help you across. If that helps at all, but.
Yeah, I wasn't looking for anything definitive. I just wanted to validate some of the concerns that were in the, in the background.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Because the other thing is that if we want to put crosswalks, then it has to go through a study and then comes back to us to see if we can fund it. Yes, Mr. Peterson?
If it's just a matter of striping and signs, you may not see it. But if it does turn out we need the full RFP, you know, the flashing beacon, then we're into the month that you would likely see something. Just for clarification.
But you'll continue to just monitor that to see if there are other concerns or else requests for a crosswalk?
Correct. You know, if we get the lane striped and we start getting a bunch more calls, that maybe will be the tipping point where one will be required out there.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Are you all right with the answer?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
On this item, and I'll just reiterate concerns that I've had about this. The first one is that it's, there's not a physical barrier on this one. So the bike lane is just striping. There's, there's not anything separating. So I don't see, and looking at studies of bike lanes on striped versus barrier versus other, other ways, it doesn't improve safety. And the second thing that I have is we, we haven't had an issue, like a public safety issue with pedestrians and bikes and, and that type of thing at this point. So it's, it's to me, an incomplete solution searching for a problem. So that's my comment on that. If we were to do bike lanes, I'd feel better with a barrier than, than striping. So that's my comment on it.
I could respond if you like. Okay.
Mr. Peterson, yeah, because, because if it gets approved, then you need to do specs and.
Right.
And to order the project, correct?
Right. So basically, the situation is the Parks Master Plan, when we went through that, the number one thing that residents were requesting in the Parks Master Plan was more bike and multimodal connectivity. If we were to try to construct this off-road, you know, we talked, this is $50,000, $60,000, we'd be talking a factor of 10 to, maybe more to go all the way from 46 up to 42 with these, if it was an off-street trail. If we started doing a physical barrier, it would, it may, it would be us, you know, if it was like a concrete barrier, it would have similar costs as opposed to the striping. The safety, it, you know, people definitely will feel a sense of safety if they're in a lane, and it definitely brings attention that vehicles should be expecting bikers to be there. So I feel that it will increase the, the multimodal experience for the folks and generally make them safer, primarily because the drivers will be expecting bikers to be there.
Any other questions? Councilmember Workman?
One follow-up question, Ryan. What is the cost, generally speaking? I don't need an exact number on those, I don't know the technical name, but those cone sticks that you'll see oftentimes that create the concept of a barrier, but they're just, you know, pylon sticks. Is that something that we looked at in this project at all?
Well, that's when they go back and do the.
Would that be part of the?
The specs.
Right.
Or are we just looking at paint?
Councilmember Workman, the project would just be paint. We, if you recall, we did put up some of those temporary barriers on West Bazaar Boulevard. I think it was not last year, but the two prior years, we were creating those false bump outs, basically, to try and slow cars down. So each winter, we had to go out and take them down again because they wouldn't cooperate with snow plowing. So that was three little smaller areas. If we were to go that distance, I believe it would be too much maintenance to try to put those up and down each year to make them, I guess I can't say that they wouldn't be effective, but it would, it would be quite an undertaking each year.
They work better in California than Minnesota.
Yeah.
Or on a very limited basis, you know, real.
And we have long winters.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Workman, what would you like to do? Approve the, the item?
I'm fine with a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion. Second by Councilmember Gustafson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, say nay. And the clerk has the division of the house. Thank you. We now move on to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is 5A. And this is a public hearing to approve the renewal of off-sale brew pub, on-sale, Sunday on-sale wine, 3.2% on-sale, and 3.2% off-sale liquor license. Ms. Collins is presenting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the annual renewal for the liquor licenses, and our city code requires that a public hearing be held. The approvals are subject to all the obligations being met by the state, the county, and the city, and that all of the fees be paid, the necessary documents submitted, and the required background checks be found with no violations. And no license will be issued if any reason for denial is found. This is a public hearing. I stand for any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Collins? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure. Second, Councilmember Keely makes a motion. Second by Councilmember Workman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. We are at item B, and this too is a public hearing. This is a resolution vacating drainage and utility easement as dedicated on the plat of YRC NUS addition. And it is one that we approved on the consent agenda. Mr. Peterson?
Good evening once again. And as the mayor said, this is closely related to an item that was on the consent agenda regarding a development in the Yellow Freight area. As you can see, the, the location is north of County Road 5 and east of Kenwood Drive. So this is the general layout of the lot. This is the lot that will have that warehouse building go on it. We used to have a sanitary, or we still currently do have a sanitary sewer pipe and easement that's located here. They're going to relocate it on the south and west side of the building in order to allow the building to go in. All that, all those improvements are at the developer's cost. And there's nothing else in the easement that we are aware of after checking with private utilities. So because there's nothing there and we have no cost associated with it, we would recommend approval of this and allow the structure to go in. And with that, it's a public hearing. I stand for any questions.
Any questions for, for Mr. Peterson? This is our usual housekeeping or kitchen cleaning, whichever you want. So any questions? Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Members of council, your pleasure.
Motion approved. Second.
Councilmember Keely makes a motion. Second by Councilmember Gustafson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. Okay, and the next item is item C. And this is to approve the application for the city of Burnsville for housekeeping amendments to sections of the city code Title 10 zoning, Chapter 4, Chapter 7, Chapter 10, Chapter 12, Chapter 12A, Chapter 13, Chapter 18, Chapter 19, Chapter 20, Chapter 21, Chapter 22A, Chapter 22B, Chapter 22C, Chapter 23. Doing a lot of housekeeping here. Chapter 26, Chapter 26A, and Chapter 30A of the Burnsville City Code to update regulations to be consistent with the current policies, correct language and definitions, add code citations and cross-reference, and add language to clarify standards and requirements. We're asked to adopt the ordinance and authorize the publication of a summary ordinance. And Ms. Arnold, our planner, is presenting this evening. Ms. Arnold?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. So this item is related, like the mayor said, to some housekeeping changes to our zoning ordinance. At the Planning Commission meeting on May 28th, there were three main issues of concern that they recommended be considered. So the first change is one that's related to accessory structure setbacks on a double frontage lot. The concern is that lots large enough to be subdivided would result in existing non-conforming accessory structures in the event that a subdivision takes place. So the recommendation was to look at the language to account for that it wouldn't be, the setback wouldn't be reduced if the lot was large enough to be subdivisible, double the size of the minimum lot size requirements. The second topic of concern with a recommendation to look at the language is related to Section 16 and 27 of the proposed ordinance relating to the limited exterior materials. So the commission was recommending a modification so that the standard applies to facades visible from neighboring properties and the public view. The language in the proposal would be facades facing a street. The concern was that as the city redevelops, more sides of buildings may be visible, and the reduction of standards would not benefit the character of the city. The third item of discussion at that Planning Commission meeting was the proposal to remove the maximum building height within the mixed zone. So this change was included as the intent is higher densities in these areas and to remove barriers to development. As mixed zones are primarily redevelopment areas within the city, we anticipate the County Road 42 redevelopment area to be zoned mixed as well. So the plan, the Planning Commission felt that not every mixed zone was appropriate for max, no maximum building height. At that meeting, staff's recommendation was approval of the ordinance as presented. The Planning Commission recommendation was approval with modification to the sections related to the double frontage lots, the sections related to the limited exterior materials, and the section related to max, no maximum height restriction within the mixed zoning district. So the intent was, recommendation came forward with the intent for the city council to discuss these possible modifications of the language proposed. And based on the concerns brought up at their meeting last week, staff can adjust the ordinance accordingly based on the discussion tonight from the city council.
Any questions for Ms. Arnold? So she's asking us, because it was sent to us from the Planning Commission, Sections 8 and 9 to discuss because they're different from staff's recommendation. Councilmember Schultz?
So on the 50% materials, if you could go back to that, if that would be possible. So the direction from council was that the language would be 50% materials facing the street.
Yes.
Yeah.
However, it appears that Planning Commission has adjusted that. Could you highlight the difference?
So the actual language in the proposed ordinance was not adjusted. The recommendation was to modify, to discuss modifying the language. The language, recommendation was not given in specifics, but the discussion that the Planning Commission focused around was that the standard would apply to facades visible from public view.
And that's what we had talked about with regard to the, the view from the curb. Yes. Ms. Faulkner?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just for clarification, we included the ordinance for your consideration, consistent with the staff recommendation to the Planning Commission. Because we had received previous direction from you, the council, on this, the ordinance before you includes your previous direction. Ms. Arnold was pointing out that the Planning Commission recommendation is different. They wanted to adopt something different, but we did not provide those changes in here because we did have your previous direction. If you do want to change it, please let us know, and we will adjust it as part of your motion.
Yeah, and that's what we'll do. And it's only around Sections 8 and 9.
So it's 8 and 10, or the sections for the double frontage setbacks, 16 and 27 for this provision, and then 25 for the, the last item that they discussed.
Okay. So Councilmember Schultz?
This actually took care of it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Keely?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While we are discussing the setback, you remember from the council work session, I brought up a request to change the side yard setback when there's an accessory structure that, and a road.
Yeah, I think that would, is that different, Ms. Faulkner?
It is. I'm going to ask for an amendment. Can we, I'm going to propose a motion that we include that in this cleanup, which was actually, I think, Ms. Faulkner's suggestion that night. And we didn't quite get there. And since we're going to be, looks like we're going to maybe discuss some of the issues within this, can we insert that in this section to change our?
I'm going to go to our attorney because he has some remarks to make on this. Mr. Jamnik?
Mayor and council, I'd recommend not doing that. The direction, if you want that to be added, is to direct the Planning Commission to conduct a hearing on that particular aspect.
Yeah. Our process is to bring it back to them. So if we stay on the same process, it'll come before them.
Because it hasn't yet, that particular issue, the side yard setback with a road present, has not come through the Planning Commission.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Workman?
Ms. Arnold, does the motion tonight include modifications from the Planning Commission? Or is this all just suggestion to discuss what they?
No, the, the staff, the motion tonight would be recommendation of the ordinance as presented, and then the Planning Commission's recommendation is listed otherwise. If it within the actual background report, not within the recommendation section.
So as listed as we originally discussed.
That's correct.
It was the council's direction to staff is how the, how the ordinance is presented. Ms. Schultz?
So I have a follow-up question for our attorney. Is it required that it goes back to Planning Commission by statute?
Mayor and council, the change to zoning code requires a public hearing. So if you're going to make a change that's not related to what has been heard, then the answer is yes. If you're going to make changes that, to the draft that has been recommended for discussion by the Planning Commission, the public has been properly apprised that that's in play, and you can make the amendments to these sections with the staff recommendation or a variant representing what the Planning Commission wants you to discuss.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Jamnik?
Could you bring up the lot split section with the subdivision?
Yeah, 8 and 10. These are the.
I would just advise the council that the Planning Commission's concern may be warranted. But as a term and condition of any lot split, the council could require the removal of the accessory building or the relocation of that. And plus, the property owner subdividing their property to sell it may find that they want to do that voluntarily. So while I think the Planning Commission's advice or recommendation is, is valid, I believe there's a mechanism in place for that to be addressed. And consequently, I would endorse the staff recommendation to go with the ordinance as presented and not seek further amendment to this draft on that particular section.
Members of the council, your thoughts on the, our attorney's recommendation with regard? Yes. Okay, so you want to make a motion to adopt the, to approve the amendments to the ordinance as presented?
The exception of.
Ms. Schultz?
So, and I, could you go to the section on building height, please?
Yes.
They removed it. Yeah. Councilmember Keely?
So on the building height, I believe we had chosen three zones or areas, 5 and 13, heart of the city, and the new center village redevelopment area. And so in my mind, I was thinking of those three areas and not necessarily assuming that they were all mixed, but probably were in most cases. And so the way it came through Planning Commission, how did that actually change? That's before, can you just sort of line up the difference?
I'm going to go to Mr. Jamnik, and then back to Ms. Arnold.
I would just like to interject. I think there's a growing misunderstanding of what you have before you tonight. You have the recommendation that the staff presented to the Planning Commission. The language before. The language before you is the language that you directed to be heard, and the language that the staff is recommending.
Yep.
What you also have is a unspecified request of the planning commission for the council to consider these three things in greater detail or to discuss alternatives to those three items. But what you have before you is the staff recommendation.
From the direction of the council.
From the direction of the council, as presented and heard at the planning commission without any change. But the planning commission is asking you to address three issues to see whether or not you're sure you want to do this, in effect, right? And I've just told you that the first one, their concern, in my opinion, is valid, but there are means by which it can be addressed or is normally addressed in their standard lot split or subdivision situation. The other two are questions of whether or not, on the mixed use, you are opening it up too broadly for unlimited height requirements. And I think Councilmember Keely's saying, the number of mixed zones that we have are relatively limited and in areas where you're comfortable having an unlimited use. The planning commission is just asking you to reaffirm that that is what your intent is before you finally adopt or make this final adoption. The other one is the facing a street versus just viewed to public. And my input to the council is, facing a street is something that attorneys couldn't fight about too much.
Yeah.
But being visible to the public, however, is something we could spend quite a few number of hours debating.
Yeah.
And who is the public, what is visible, et cetera, et cetera, how far away. So in those situations, my advice to you would be, stay with what you presented.
And what he's saying is that that's what he can defend in court.
Well, we might probably not have to.
Yeah.
Yes, no.
Yeah. So, but, so Councilmember Workman.
Well, thank you, Joel, for the, over the clarification on that. If the planning commission wishes us to discuss it, as far as the mixed use goes, I don't see that being much of an issue as it stands today in that our mixed use zoning is already in areas that is surrounded by other business uses, with the exception of one that abuts R1. So I don't see an issue on that, including mixed districts, as part of this policy decision.
Okay. Councilmember Gustafson.
I just wanted to ensure when we talk about the HOC, that we're talking about 1 and 2?
Yeah.
That they're included together?
Yeah, it is.
Because we have directed, we do have two different zones there.
Yeah. But remember, at the work session, we said, when we were talking, HOC and?
Just wanted to assure that that was correct. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz.
I, no, I'm very pleased with this. And I would like to thank staff for laying this out carefully. Much appreciation on that.
Do you move to adopt the ordinance and authorize the publication?
I so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Schultz, second by Councilmember Gustafson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Thank you, everybody. Because also, in watching the planning commission discussion, it goes back and forth, and I'm thinking, okay, I think they already agree, but they're just not quite sure that's what they think they heard us say. But that's what I heard at the discussion, so when I was watching it. Yeah. Okay. I will now recess the Burnsville City Council meeting so the Economic Development Authority meeting can convene. President Gustafson.
I'd like to call the order of the Economic Development Authority and note that all commissioners are present. Are there any additions to the final agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which just consists of the approval of minutes. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Keely.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor?
Aye.
And it passes. On to the regular agenda. That's a public hearing. It's a resolution approving purchase and development contract between the Burnsville Economic Development Authority and Burnsville Coffee LLC, and approving the conveyance of land contained therein. This will be a public hearing after Mr. Enehaus presents.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As soon as I can get my brains up here, we'll. The item before you is the sale of EDA-owned land. The land is located at County Road 42 and Newton Avenue. The land, as you can see from what's on your monitor, is elongated. The land also slopes away from Newton and away from County Road 42. In essence, it is a hill. The land is also impacted by a couple of different easements for utilities. There has been a sign on this property for about 12 years. We've had a couple of other proposals that have come before you over the years, and we have not moved forward. The proposal before us tonight is to sell the land for what is a new concept with Caribou. It's going to be a drive-through only. There will be limited number of these built this year in the Twin Cities, so we will have one of the first of the new concept. As you can see from this diagram, the building will be located on the parcel so that there will be plenty of queuing for the cars entering off of Newton. There will be no cars entering from County Road 42. There will also be a patio included with this development. What is nice about the patio is, as you may recall, we are going to put a trail on County Road 42, and the developer is considering a sidewalk from their property to that trail so the bikers and the walkers using the trail can come down, get a cold or a hot beverage, whatever they desire. There will be limited parking, primarily to accommodate the employees, obviously, since it's a drive-through only, but there also will be proof of parking in case there isn't exceeding the parking that has been installed. The building will be about 550 square feet. The developer has made an offer of $65,000, which is the appraised price. The land was appraised just a couple of months ago. The purchase agreement calls for a closing by the end of November of this year, with commencement of construction by January of next year, and completion of construction by December of next year. The developer has had their plans in with planning staff and engineering. We are in the process of reviewing all of those plans. Quite frankly, if you approve this sale, I believe that the construction will start much, much sooner than January of next year. Quite frankly, it'll probably start this summer, right after we, after we close on the sale. The Economic Development Commission reviewed this at their meeting on May 8th. They recommend approval of the sale. This is a public hearing, and I would certainly stand for any questions you have. I should say the developer is here if you have any questions of the developer.
Are there any questions? I'd just make one recommendation, change the closing date to the 30th of November.
It's a bonus leap year, extra day in November.
Yeah. No other questions? No questions? This is a public hearing, says there are no questions. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak to this subject? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain.
So move.
Commissioner Couts, motions. Commissioner Keely, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enehaus. We have no miscellaneous, so we move to adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Commissioner Keely, move to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Workman, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will turn it over to you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now reconvene the Burnsville City Council meeting, and we have one last item on our agenda, and that is, Ian, that's the appointments to the advisory commission. So ladies and gentlemen, we had spent time interviewing candidates to our commission, and this evening, we will be appointing candidates to the different commissions that we have. And these commissions, the folks advise us, just as everybody has heard us talk about the planning commission and the recommendations they have made to us, and also the Economic Development Commission. And we also have a Parks and Natural Resource Commission. So let's begin with the Economic Development Commission. And if Councilmember Gustafson would make the appointments, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This was not an easy decision this year. There were a lot of great candidates that came through. But I am pleased to announce the nomination of Crystal Fitchett as a regular member with a term ending 6/2022. Chris Claveter is a regular member, term ending 6/2022. And Al Anderson is an alternate member, term ending 6/2021.
There is a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
The, Councilmember Keely, seconds. The motion of these commissions to be appointed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you. For Parks and Natural Resource Commission, Councilmember Schultz.
This was an extremely competitive commission this year, shockingly competitive. The persons who are appointed are Mark Cleveland, who will be a regular member. His term ends 6/2022. We have Shannon Woolman, who is joining as a regular member. Her term will end 6/2022. Andy McGuire is also new and joining, regular member, term ending 6/2022. Nelson Fitchett, alternate member, his term is ending 6/2022. And then we have a youth member, who is Colton Bauer, and his term will end on 6/2019. So congratulations to all of our Parks and Natural Resources Commissioners.
Second to the appointments.
One correction, Councilmember Schultz. Mr. Andy McGuire.
Oh, 20.
2020. Okay. So Councilmember Schultz makes the motion, second by Councilmember Keely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. And, yeah, and, yeah, because he's a senior and he'll be done. Actually, 2020 for Colton Bauer.
2020.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, that is.
Colton Bauer is 2020. So the maker of the motion and the seconder of the motion, all agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And the vote is all yeses?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. Very good. Planning Commission, Councilmember Workman.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to move Robert Timmerman from an alternate to a regular member with term ending June 2022. Appoint Chris John as a regular member, term ending June 22. And Ali Awad, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, as an alternate member, term ending 6/2020.
Second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you. We have all commissions appointed and ready for, their first meeting is in July.
Yes, and the training will be on June.
In June. Members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us.